You ready? Welcome you November 2nd, 2022, to the City Council Meeting. We'll call. Plus members of you, Craig, to my left, Jason Utrich, to my right, Heather Dusso, your staff. Joining us on the phone is Rami Schultz, who is ill. Then we have City Attorney, to my left, the City Attorney, Kate Shigman. To my left, the City Attorney, Kenny Cridge, the Secretary of State, and the other. Tonight's invocation will be by Joseph Nichols. He can kill them. He can kill some of them. Please stand.
The mayor was kind enough to ask me to sing the invocation, and I said, "Don't make me sing this." And of course, he did, he could hear your color. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for the recently elected mayor, city council members, and all the other elected officials who serve the people in Deer Park. Let everything discussed at this meeting be aligned with your word, and may its members speak with humility when presenting their own ideas. And in your wisdom and mercy, guide them to leaders that your people need and inspire them to conduct their work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. And finally, we ask you to renew each of us with the strength of your presence and inspire our teachers to build a community worthy of those that they serve. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next up, that's item four, agenda, two, I want to add two on that. Under this, item D, motion to set the final assessment rule here in Gate for LID number 2019-01 during the March 16th, 2022 regular council meeting. And you have that as C, uh, E, to this table.
Two, three, and a, sir.
Motion second. Any questions from the council? All payers.
Hi.
Motion. Thank you, Ron. I forgot about you.
Yeah.
Okay. Item five, approval of January 19, 2022, regular council meeting. It's a motion to approve it. You have a motion and a second. Any comments by the council? All payers, say aye.
Aye.
Motion two.
Aye.
Thank you, Ron. Item six, under your business, A, extension amendment number three to water department farming agreement. Ken Greer, glad to be able to speak on that.
Sure. This is for a parcel of land that we own out at the intersection of Montgomery and Dalton or Vanrye Shore. It's a big section of ground where North Dalton Wells, one and two sit. And we've had this agreement placed for someone, basically when I started, 20-plus years ago, probably, was mostly for lead management, taking care of the ground. The farmer basically does all the seeding, does all the cutting, gets whatever ground bales and he get off it and does that for us so we're not out there trying to spray it and keep up with it, keep the weeds down or trying to mow it or those kinds of things. So this is simply an extension of the previous agreement that was issued probably 15 years ago now, if I count that right. And this request is to approve that so he can continue on and keep, keep the farming going on and keeping that ground maintained out there for us. We can't have structures out there. We have this clear zone we have to have maintained for around our wells and so forth. So this is really the best use of the property is somebody to keep it mowed down and take care of it.
Motion two.
I'll say.
You have a motion and a second. Any comments by the council? All payers, say aye.
Aye.
Motion two.
Aye.
Item B, agreement between the city of Deer Park and Eaton, for the Deer Park Consciences. Everybody read it? Motion to approve. You have a motion and a second. Any comments by the council?
This is one where it, it just seemed like there was a distinct drop in quality from one year to the next as we moved to a different order. I know that's not under direct control since it's really, maybe it is up to who we are really now responsible for that. But it also has to be somebody willing to undertake that. Do we have any other options?
One of the problems that they had last year at the council meeting was they correlated a lot of people cancel because of COVID. So it's true. They didn't care that much.
Yeah. Now that's good. Okay. Yeah, I'd be in favor of, I love the concerts. I love the concert series. I think that's great. I would just, you know, I'd like to keep an eye on it because it had been, it had been really effective and enjoyable in the past. It was just less than it was likely.
Anything else? All payers.
Who's second?
I.
Who's second?
Motion carry. Item C, agreement for professional service, 2022, aviation, 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 aviation plus APR three dash fifty-three dash oh twenty-two dash oh thirty-one dash twenty-two, I'm sorry, 2022, new first one's for airport, GB engineering, uh, Gero.
So this is our engineering agreement for services for this year's federal aviation grant. What we're doing this year is some pretty extensive pavement maintenance. It'll be the crosswind runway, our main taxiway, and all the connecting taxiways. There are a couple of areas that are pretty heavily damaged. They'll do some grinding and pavement replacement. And this covers all of the, the engineering for that.
Motion two. More than motion. And second, any questions? All of the council. All payers.
Aye.
Motion carry. Item E, motion to set the final assessment rule here in Gate for LID number 20, 2019-01 during the March 16th, 2022. Do you have a speaker?
Sure. Happy to, uh, and ladies and gentlemen of the council and the audience, at the last meeting of the council, the council voted to move forward with the ordinance preparation for the final assessment rule for LID number 2019 dash oh one, which is the project out by the airport with the industrial road surface, water sewer sidewalks. The LID portion is the portion that's going to be paid for by those property owners. And just as a reminder to those present, initially, we had anticipated that their share would be not to exceed 1.25 million dollars. All of the property owners signed, 100% of them signed, a petition for formation of the LID in that form by passage of an ordinance of the city council after multiple hearings and considerations and listening to property, property owners and doing what they had asked. Because of the reduction in how much it cost, the mayor, Roger, Debbie, and our office got together and decided that we could adjust how much they would pay instead of charging them the full 1.25 million dollars, which you can justify because they signed the petition and because the project cost and value was in excess of $4 million, even though it was anticipated to cost in excess of $6 million, the decision was made to recommend to the council to charge $875,000 and spread out none of the property owners in the same method that they had signed on the petition. So everyone gets a 30% reduction. So the, the idea behind this motion puts in place the next step in the proceedings and so that there are no surprises because nobody likes them. The, at the hearing on the 16th, assuming that this motion is passed, at the hearing on the 16th, the hearing will be open and anyone having an objection or a concern over the assessment rule would be there to speak. And I will likely be present or Kate, one of us will be there front our office to actually handle that particular public hearing because it's, it's fairly critical and there's, there are timelines associated with appeals of the property owners. Again, we anticipate no appeals. This is hallelujah, happy day, it's all good, and we have no reason to believe that anything will change because all of the same property owners who signed the petition remain, to our knowledge, as the property owners to this day. So it should be fairly simple and straightforward, but you know, never plan for that because you never know. So what we will be doing after, what we will ask the council to do after the closing of that public hearing, unless there are concerns that are addressed and the council wants to do something otherwise, there will be an ordinance that will establish the assessment rule, the final assessment rule. The city, and the reason it's somewhat critical is the city, effective July 31, has already paid the first payment on the 1.25, or excuse me, the, yeah, the 1.25 million dollar loan from Kirk, that this is a component of how it's going to be repaid. So since the city has already paid that, the plan at this point, and we're still working on the details, is to use the 875,000 dollars, get the ordinance in place there. Then there's this, there's a statutory 60-day appeal period for the property owners to appeal if they want to. Again, we don't think that they will, but we wanted to all these things in place so that we can create the date that we've been talking about for the allee allee income predate, meaning if you pay your assessment by a certain date, you property owner don't have to pay any of the interest. You just pay the assessment. And we're going to pick, right now, we're leaning toward August 31 of 2022. But if you make your payment on September 1st, you're going to be paying your interest, which is 3% plus 1.5% administrative fee for the city, which is all covered in the petition that all of them signed. And this is not a petition for those that aren't aware, that it's a petition that we drafted at your assistance for them to sign. And then they all circulated it, signed it, and provided it. So all of these property owners are getting in excess of a $4 million improvement to their property and in turn value to their property for a fraction of the cost because they're each paying, you know, their share of 875,000, which is less than more than the entire cost. So, so that's what will happen, and I know it's later on the agenda to talk about three readings. We will ask you, without question, please waive the three reading process and pass that ordinance at that meeting because it's critical to get the timelines set up for appeals. So happy to answer any questions about the process. I know we covered it a little bit at the last meeting, but I think the more that we can talk about it, the people can become more and more comfortable with it, the better off that we all are, you know, because I think it's something that you'll probably hear me talk about it more than anyone, you know, because I don't know that anyone will actually show up for the public hearing unless they want to show up and say thank you.
I'm going to make a motion.
Well, may I ask a question? May I ask a question?
Sure.
Is there any reason at all, anybody who, like, can you consider that anyone would object to this?
The only I can imagine is that they would say, well, we don't have the final actual number of the cost for the project. We don't have it exact. We'll have it very close, but we've already started paying on it. And regardless of what the final construction number is, we know we have written checks for improvements that we promised that we would make as part of the petition, and we know that those checks were written in excess of 4 million. So to ask them to pay 875 when they were willing to pay 1.25 million, you know, I guess the issue wouldn't say why. I really want a deeper discount. I mean, you know, I guess you could, you know, that's conceivable. Or somebody says, well, I think my property should be valued a different way, but in the petition that they signed, they all agree, this is how we're going to assess all the properties. It's based on the front footage, and there was a discount made for the night property that's on the corner. They only paid half because they already paid 100% for the improvements that they actually used to access the building. They can still use these, they don't need them. They're very built, so. But it, it, the reason, I guess the biggest thing that could occur at some point, and this will happen because it happened on the last LID, once, now that the infrastructure is in place, there's a potential for the people who are, hold the property in ownership to sell it. And that's all well and good. If they sell the whole thing, we don't care, just whoever buys it pays the LID fee, okay? Every year, annual fee for 20 years. However, oftentimes what happens is they take their big piece of property and they want to sell a little piece off to someone else. And that's when we get involved and we look at it. And in the last LID, because of the pace at which things might be developed and also some of the, you know, unknowns, if somebody advised their property, it's likely that what we would do is insist on the entire thing to be paid at once because otherwise you're trying to pick, how much should be assigned to this piece and how much to that piece? And if somebody builds something that's undesirable to be next to, then maybe the other piece never gets built and the city ends up owning it because they default on the LID payment. These are all missed parade of horribles that could happen, but it's, I, you know, again, because the amounts are so low per property owner, it's very likely that, I think we'll probably see some property owners pay it off because of the interest rate. They might be able to get closer, you know, not, not unfavorable rate to three and a half percent. You know, we're just charging them what our rate is plus a half percent administrative fee, which is what we told them we would do at the end of petition, and they all signed off. So I don't, I don't think anything's going to happen, but that's probably as wild as it could get. Thank you.
Okay, you ready? Okay, I move to set the date for the local improvement district number 2019 dash oh one, final assessment rule of the hearing as March 16th, 2022, at 7:00 PM during the regular city council meeting and to direct the city court treasurer to mail notice of the hearing to the owners of the property on the assessment, on the assessment goal 25 days prior to the hearing and to publish the notice of the hearing in the city's official newspaper, Spokemun's Review, and in the Deer Park Tribune, once a week for two consecutive weeks prior to the meeting. And with the last publication in the Spokemun Review to be of these 50 days prior to the date of the hearing.
Your second. Motion second. Any more questions? All payers.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Ron. Okay. Number E, chicken discussion, council and staff.
All right. I've heard for years that folks would like the opportunity to raise some hens in their backyard. Nobody's in favor of roosters, so there's no need to go there. The reasonable, accepted kind of idea of numbers would be anywhere between three and eight. Three is kind of the minimum you need for affordability. Eight is enough to feed a good-sized family regularly, so somewhere in that range would be great to let people have the freedom to own and raise chickens. It's going to do a couple of things for them, allows them to be more in control of their food, allows them to teach their children some good habits. There's, there's all sorts of benefits that come from that, and the cost to the city and the neighbors is pretty low. It's not much of a nuisance as hens, unless we keep roosters out. And so my desire would be, if the council's in agreement, that we ask the planning commission to go through and prepare a, an ordinance or revision of the zoning code so that then we can approve that with all the necessary secondary and different zoning requirements. So.
Roger?
So, I mean, I've been thinking about this for a while, and I thought probably the best thing, and Tim, did you, did you pass out that pack of stuff that we had from what the planning commission did earlier?
I did.
So, so basically what, what he's passed out, in 2010, in October 2010, this question came up the last time, and as part of that, the council, again, passed the task to the planning commission to take a look at it purely as it relates to the zoning code of the city. Farm animals are talked about in two different sections of the code. They're talked about under the zoning code, and they're talked about in the animal control section of the code where we used to have animal enforcement as well. So there, that's where it sat in 2010. So Chairman Burke was on the planning commission, he was the chairman at the time, and took the planning commission through the evaluation process of what our comprehensive plan says, what our zoning code says. We started in about November or December and had work sessions and public hearings and, and lots of work on it. And then finally in June, they finalized deliberations and prepared the fines and fact that you have before you, not in support of many of the codes that we have in place and not amending the comprehensive plan that we have in place. So in our code, in our current section, we have one zoning town, residential 1A, that does specifically talk about farm animals. Now, we don't have any land zoned, R1A, but that zoning classification was actually put in place in 1981. In 1990, it was amended somewhat, but they are still in a place where they were allowed to be in that R1A classification if someone chose to zone a bunch of property to get there. And that's obviously the challenge. The amount of lot size in that area is 12,000 to 18,000 square feet. So the idea, I'm assuming in 1981, and probably discussions in 1990, were if you were going to have chickens, you would have them on a larger parcel of land so as to not impact your neighbor and, and any of the discussions along those lines. Where we have lots that are at 6,000 square feet, small ones, so half that size, and you can imagine the chickens in the deck. So the discussion through the planning commission during that time in, in 2011 was because of those issues, because of comments they received out in the public, because of the comments from the public hearings, a lot of them centered around, you know, we're in a farming community, but we're not a farming town per se. If they want to have farm animals, they could live in a county, and it's just across the street or across the border, whatever. But a lot of, you know, it does impact the neighbor that doesn't want chickens next to them. It does impact, we heard from real estate people, we heard from a lot of different people through this process. So ultimately, the commission, Dan's guidance, developed that finance fact you have in front of you. And the council concurred with it at the time. Basically, in the, into amend the zoning code, how our code is set up is it puts the task on the planning commission to go through it, amend it, suggest revisions to the council, develop finance fact and support and a recommendation. If they choose not to make those changes, then it puts on the council that you have to go through and develop your own finance fact conclusions in support of something different. And beware, you'll have to extend the challenge of a potential suit through Land Use Petition Act if, if someone feels breached by what has happened there and they can take the planning commission's action and say, well, you have your planning department or your planning authority that voted against that, but you went over that. So it puts a burden on the council to come up with a series of finance fact as to why something different than what the planning commission came up with is, is recommended. Okay, so there's, there's a challenge there. As far as animals in chapter six of the code, that's where our, it talks about livestock and chickens and those kinds of things, farm animals. You know, the commission was silent on that because quite honestly, the planning commission has nothing to do with the animal section in that part of the code. But at the time, we had animal enforcement person on city staff. Now, we don't have that either. I mean, we contracted the Spokane County Animal Control for animal enforcement, et cetera. So I'm not exactly sure what would change if we had to get them involved if there was an issue with chickens and, and enforcement and all those kinds of things and how that may affect the contract that you have with them, whether you contract with them for that or not. But we don't have staff there dealing with animal control now at all. So if you set rules, six, 11, why not 15, how come not 21, we don't have nothing that enforces that. So you have to be aware of that, is if you decide that you want to amend your section titled six, you have to deal with the enforcement provision too, whether it's hiring another staff person back in the animal control world again, or whether you want to work with Spokane County Animal Control. However you want to do that, that's, that's an issue. It's not a zoning thing, okay? Zoning deals with land use and those kinds of things. And right now, in our code, farm animals are only allowed in one zone, they're not allowed in any of the others. So this has been passed out. I encourage you to read it, you can see what the planning commission did. If you can figure out perhaps what from a policy standpoint has changed since 2010 or 2017, when the last comp plan amendment was done, maybe there's, there's things in there that may need to be changed. You have to understand that if, to change the comp plan, that happens in a once-a-year cycle. Right now, if we start it now, the earliest you can be adopted is around the middle of 2023. Interestingly enough, the county currently is taking us all through the county-wide comp plan amendment under the old, urban growth, uh, growth management act. And so we're going to be involved with a update of our comp plan just as part of that. But at this point, I don't know that there's any of our land use policies, goals, et cetera, out there that, that are going to be suggested for change. We haven't heard of any necessarily, but there, there could be. You know, the council's changed obviously since 2010, the planning mission's changed since 2010, but I can't tell you that the policies or the land use things have changed. There's always been this thought of how neat chickens were to some people, and there's that same thought as we heard in 2010, and there's, those people didn't want chickens, and so it was all part of that. And so that's where this order is, or this, this decision was done by the planning commission back at that time. Again, timing, just, just to be, how it has to go through is if there's a comp plan amendment to be done, 2023, middle of the year might be when that would be finished or two U for adoption. And then a zone change would happen after that, and that assumes that the planning commission would be in support of it to make the change. The council would be in support of it to make the change, and then, and then go back, and then the zoning code, that assumes the council, the planning commission would be supportive of the zoning change and the council as well. So it's more than, maybe you need to have chickens. It's, it's way more than that, all right? Because we are charged, the planning mission's charged to make sure land values and impacts to neighborhoods aren't impacted. That isn't even addressed what may be up there in HOAs and all those kinds of things. That's a whole other thing that we don't enforce, but strictly from the zoning code standpoint, those are the steps. And so there's work there. The, the comp plan amendment was done by, in 2017, was done by a consultant. So we're going to need to hire someone to help us go through that path and do that. So it's real money involved. It's not as simple as just writing paper and passing something. We don't have that luxury in the land use world. So anyway, that, that's really all I have. I mean, that's the steps, the process. Read this if you want to go forth. There's more meanings, you can talk about it again, but it's one of those topics that it's not as simple as it just pass ordinance and change it. Questions?
No chickens.
Yeah, I, I have the same opinion. From what I've heard, from the people that have talked and so forth, the majority don't want any part of chickens in the city of Deer Park. It's, if you're, you know, if you're struggling to eat, go down to the food bank. There's food readily available down there. Nobody's going to go.
Yeah, I have, I have some questions. Interesting, I don't like chickens, I don't want chickens. And so when I first heard this, I was really wrestling with this, like, well, just let's let this slide or that sort of thing. But, but I also don't want cats or like cats, but we allow cats. So, so I had a couple of questions. You know, you mentioned the enforcement piece, because I want to be fair. If there, if there really is a contingent of people who want to have chickens, I feel like we should give them a, a, a fair shake. So what, what would happen, we don't have an enforcement person. What would happen right now if somebody just went down to North Ward and bought some chicks this spring and tossed them in their yard? Like, would we?
So currently, it's a zoning violation, and so... So currently, it's a zoning violation, and so I get to deal with those or Jacobson to deal with those just as a zoning enforcement provision, because it's not permitted to be in, you're violating what the land use provisions are. The part I'm talking about is if you have three chickens, five chickens, nine chickens, 12 chickens.
Nine hundred chickens.
The zoning code doesn't care about that. And the other part to think about is if somebody has a lot of chickens, they have lots of eggs, because my sister-in-law handles that for me. Pretty soon, she's giving away, she's selling them, okay? Well, as soon as you make a sale of those eggs, then are you not having a home occupation? And in our code, your home occupation has to occur within the dwelling. So now you raise the chickens inside the house to be able to sell the eggs. So it's more cumbersome. There's more things there in the zoning world than just chickens for meat.
Yeah. Right now, on, sorry, trying to clear my thoughts. You can have four dogs and four cats on an average resident. Is it three? Do you know who number is?
No idea.
Is it three degrees? So it'd be six total. And do we have any restrictions on like how big the dogs are or anything like that?
Yeah, none of them.
Because they're huge.
Spokane Animal Control is involved with the enforcement provisions of what they are, and we, by their contract, adopt what their rules are. Dogs and cats aren't farm animals by definition.
Right.
And so I don't know that there's a limitation. I mean, we have some provisions there about kennels. If someone was in a breeding operation, some of those kinds of things, as I recall, there's some stuff in the animal section about that. And pet store, or not pet stores, but animal stores, yeah, pet stores, I guess. There was some words in the code about that, because we had those several, several years ago. That's the only part I can about that.
Okay. Thank you.
No comment?
No.
Council can stay.
Appreciate the information, Roger. Sorry to cut me earlier this week. I appreciate your willingness to give us this information. It's helpful. I don't personally want chickens either. Just to make that serious. I did, I did spend a day or two telling my children that they were going to have to do a lot of chores and relations to chickens, but with no actual plans to give them. One question would be, I know that other cities have adopted various chicken rules and things, although it sounded like the last few years. I know Spokane does, and that was one of those things that just, we did see more rural, we did see more farm-focused, and it just seems kind of strange that we wouldn't follow that policy as well. Do we, anybody have any idea when that changed out and anything to go look back in Spokane?
Well, again, in 1981 is when our code says this thing about R1A zoning and allowing livestock in there. So I'm, that was way before my time. So I'm guessing they were an issue back then as it relates to farm animals, be it pig, meat goats, or pigs, or whatever. And so that's when it started here. And so the fact that our code specifically calls out the zone with which they're allowed in, then means the rest of the zones are not allowed. And so that's, if our code zoning code was silent, it would be, I think, a different discussion, I believe, but it's not. So they made that stand in 81, did some modifications to it in 90, which I don't know if that was the parcel sizes or what that was. But, you know, 12,000 to 18,000 square foot, it's kind of on slopes and a bunch of other stuff, but a 12,000 to 18,000 square foot lot, we don't have any of those. Arcadia Heights was 22,000 to 23,000 square foot lots when it was planted. Did, and that was in 1979, so did the 81 rules go along just at that time because of that? You know, I can't tell you, it's just, you know, you look at sequence of what happened in Deer Park, and it's just the dates that happened.
I was curious, are there any plans for there to be any R1A zones within the city in the future?
It would be purely a request by someone that has property that wants to annex, and I would probably guess that answer based on utility improvement, size and costs. If anything, densities are getting smaller, they're not getting larger, so the price of running sewer and water streets and curbs and gutters and all those kinds of things to subdivision, these developers want 50-foot lots. They don't want that work out to 10,000 square feet, they complain about that. They don't want anything that's 12 to 18, and so it's going to take a unique chunk of ground. Maybe a group of owners want to go down that path, but that's what's going to take.
Yes, sir.
Rod, you have any comments?
Yes, I do, actually. Excuse me. So, you know, we've been hearing about freedoms for the people that want to have chickens, it'll be liberty and, you know, so on and so forth. Well, you know, we kind of think as a city council, what are the freedoms that a resident should be able to enjoy, to enjoy their property without giving them the order of chickens? I have a 87-year-old neighbor, and I brought this question up to her the past week, and her, she is up every single day, she is outside in her yard, where there's shoveling snow, breaking ice, planting flowers, cutting her grass, that's what keeps her happy. And I was asking her, Nita, what do you think about having a breeding of chickens in the house? And she looked at me, she said, you've got to be crazy, our yards are so small. These houses, in our neighborhood, we have about 3,500, roughly 3,500 to 4,000 square foot lots. Can you imagine having three to eight chickens there? And what about the families that want to have a birthday party in their yard if they happen to be downwind from their neighbor's chickens? And they have to go retreat into the home because they do not have the liberty and the freedom to enjoy their property as tax owners? I mean, we've got to think about, you know, what about the husband and wife that wants to sit out on the porch and have a cup of tea and eating, but the wind changes direction, they got to smell their neighbor's chickens? I think we got to think about the greater good of our community. People choose to live in the city, in large cities, because they like the entertainment, they like sort of commute back to work, they like the city's services, and they provide, people live in the country because they like to have elbow room, they like to have the ability to have farm animals, raise chickens, raise goats, pigs, cattle, horses, so on and so forth. And then people choose small towns because they don't like the hustle and bustle of a large city. They want a little bit more elbow room, but they're not quite going for the agricultural farming lifestyle, and so it's a nice balance. So I think we got to become the greater good of our community, you know, out those people that don't deserve, that do not deserve to have to be downwind from chickens, I'm sorry, that's my point.
So how do you want to proceed? Do you, it seems pretty clear. It seems pretty clear that, I'm just counting from comments, it's at least two no votes. So I would, I would really follow, make an emotion at this point.
Do you want to move forward?
Sure. I mean, I don't think I'd make a motion to that. I think I'd make a draw. Yeah.
Let me ask you a note or two on that, because eight HOAs. Where I live, it's 300 of its own houses, and we're not allowed to have that through that. Habitat is the same thing, they're not allowed to do that. I have copies of those, if you do want to see them. And there is four other HOAs within this city. So you're looking at 600 houses.
Right. So, yeah, all the work in the asshole that where a good majority of folks are already put other needs in place to keep them out. I appreciate that, it makes sense. Thanks for letting us have the discussion.
Okay, item 7, old business we have then. Item 8 resolutions, letter A, resolution 2022-002, authorizing the mayor to execute agreement between the city and the Washington State Community Aviation Revitalization Board loan that we've talked about the last couple of meetings. This loan will extend sewer mains onto the airport from Cedar Road. As you know, there's an ordinance that requires any property owners to connect to a sewer once it's installed and down their frontage road. These sewer mains will mostly provide sewer for those hangars and those businesses that are already existing. In order to get the loan, we did have to include some sewer mains that would develop additional revenue for the airport. So we have done that, and we already have some interest in those lots, so it will help with revenue generation. The loan is for $730,000 with a 20-year repayment program. Three years of that will be, could be deferred, deferred payment, deferred interest, with payments yearly at $54,145 and some change. And this is based on engineering estimates to install the sewer. Any questions by the council? Okay, item 9, ordinances, now these are the final meeting. Ordinance A is 2022-1005, zoning amendment, I'll read it right away. In ordinance of the city of Deer Park, Washington, approving the zoning map amendment, commonly known as the storage solutions, Deer Park LLC zoning map amendment, changing the zoning classification of real property, real property generally described as a portion of Spokane County tax parcel number 28014.0079, from a business park to a diversified commercial and setting standard. Motion second? All favor? Okay, item B, ordinance 2022-006, council procedures. We're heading, in ordinance of the city of Deer Park, Washington, amending chapter 2.04 of the Deer Park Council Code, providing public comment prior to passage of ordinances, creating a deadline for the council agenda items and procedure for approving late agenda items for the council meetings containing the specific to be clause and the setting effective date. And our attorney is going to speak on this just for a little bit.
Your honor, before speaking to this, my suggestion would be to have a motion in a second for passage of the ordinance that's in the packet now. Even if you make a motion, you make the second, you don't have to vote for it, but I think that we should have the discussion about the actual ordinance that's presented, and so rather than random discussion. So that would be my suggestion on how to proceed, is in keeping with how we typically proceed in those matters.
We don't want a motion in a second, we want a motion in.
My suggestion would be to have a motion in second and then have discussion. After the motion in second, all make a presentation about what's changed, what's different, where we've been, and then council would have discussion.
Motion could.
I'll second. Thank you. So great discussion, great energy by the council on this issue. The mayor had on his list of things, you know, from last year, because frankly, there are a lot of occasions where it just doesn't work to have three readings. And so the policy arguably was failing, and it had the appearance that the council's failing itself and failing its citizens because you're constantly waiving this three reading process. And you have to look at it from the perspective of, you know, there is absolutely no requirement anywhere that you have any readings. You can bring ordinances in right now, pass the approval, and then you're done. You don't have to have any readings, first reading, second reading, third reading. You know, let's bring things up for discussion at one meeting, don't act on, approve them at the next meeting. It's all up to you. These are your rules for how you, as the council, want to proceed. And frankly, a lot of the concern over the three reading process was voiced by the members of the council. So it's like, well, the mayor asked me, Chuck, why do we have this? And so I looked back and I tried to figure out, near as I could figure out, you had it because when it was put in place, we didn't have the communication on technology levels that we have right now. And so oftentimes, things, and I remember this when I started representing entities, we would bring in precious photocopies of documents to the meeting because otherwise you had to mail them to people, right? You'd bring these copies in, and people would look at them, and then they would be asked to act on them at that meeting. So my best guess is this was to prevent that from occurring. That doesn't occur here in Deer Park anymore. Rarely do you get something handed to you that says, you know, we need to pass this, that's several pages that's substituted, right? So the mayor said, you know, look at this, and I said, okay, that's a big leap to go from no three reading process to skip rid of it. And so we talked about it, and staff talked about it, and so we came up with sort of this hybrid of get rid of the three readings, but put in requirements that things don't just get blocked into the council without a procedural vote. And at the end of the day, when we finally talked about it after the last council meeting, I don't know if it was Tim, or Debbie, or Roger, or me, we all kind of just decided, what if we just take out any reference to the three reading process and leave it the way that it is, and take the procedures about other things that have nothing to do with ordinances, but all other things, and put that in so that we aren't operating a community based on ambush and surprise, not intentional, but often unintentional, okay? And so what we ended up with is, forget about the three reading thing, it's going to be there, I think we, the horse has been beat by this group and the audience, and I think the community understands, there are just going to be those times when you get away with the three reading process. And we probably, one of the things I learned out of this, and I know Debbie took this away from her too, is that when we put the agenda together, if we're going to ask the council to waive the three reading process, we want to make sure it's very, very clear and maybe have a panel about why, okay? So you're not just, we're not just, well, it's convenient to waive the three readings so we don't have to bother with this again. Take for example, the ordinance that you just passed. There's absolutely no good reason that we had three readings on that ordinance. There was no discussion on the last, it was like a motion in a second and you passed it. Now, maybe you have a first reading, and then at the second reading, you waive the three readings because no one had any concerns at the first reading. And we proceed, and we try to get, you know, kind of, it's like skipping rope, you know, we're going to miss everything else, but I think you try to get, find your bearings and proceed on that level. If frankly, that thing had been through the planning commission and unanimously approved by that, and unless you were going to kick it back the other way and have your own hearing, you're kind of proven, so you could have waived it in the first reading. But that, you know, it just depends on how comfortable you are with that, you know? So I mean, it's a very good example to use. Another good example is going to be the example on the LID formation. You just, you never get yourself bogged down in process when you have a statutory appeal period that's involved there. So what's before you this evening? We set out on a quest to make less government, and now we've created more government by this. But that's okay, because it's your government, you can do whatever you want. And so the inconvenience of the more government is when somebody wants to bring, for example, let's take tonight's agenda, the, I call them backyard chickens, because that's where they usually got, and that's what we talked about, and I was involved in that in 2010-11, is that instead of having that discussion at this meeting by the mayor just simply saying, hey, cool, Caleb wants to have this on the agenda, we're just going to put it here as I mean, no. We don't do that. Before there's a code to approve the agenda, the mayor announces, and it'll be on the agenda, if this is passed, it'll say late agenda items, and it'll be a placeholder. If anybody has a late agenda. If anybody has a late agenda item, then you bring it up there and state what it is. And if people, let's say, for example, you had, I'll call Caleb a pickaxe because this is a good example, you and Roger and Tim were aware this was going to happen. So Roger was able to copy the materials, get it here, and so at least there was some foundation to have a reasonable discussion. And he was prepared so that he could make the comments that he made this evening. If that hadn't occurred, if you just came in and said, your honor, I want to add chickens on that thing, and maybe the other councilors said, chicken, what are we going to talk about chickens? Let's just put it on the next agenda, we've got enough going on today. That sounds great, Caleb. And then by then, maybe you can meet with the staff, or talk to Tim about what it is that you want to do, and we'll have it on. That's what this ordinance would require. If you had followed exactly what you did, and the mayor would then probably recommend, let's have this discussion, I would like to add it to the agenda because I think we should have a discussion, to see where we're even going to, if we're going to do anything with it, right? And so it's not surprise and ambush, it's just, let's get this on here and have this discussion. So it's, it does add procedural things, but it adds the things that I think that the public, when you heard them embrace the three reading process, almost to a comment, I don't know that anybody was opposed to just leaving it the way it is. This three reading process only addresses ordinances, so this addresses everything. So now if you don't get the item to Debbie before, whatever time it is on Friday before the meeting, it was inserted here at 9:30 a.m., okay? Then it's a late agenda item. So then everybody in the public, the newspapers, the online people that look at the, you know, the agenda, I mean, I get my agenda, not from Debbie, I get it from your website. I pop it up in the afternoon on Friday, or Monday morning, and there it is, right? So everybody has the same sheet usually. And then if there's late agenda items, we bring them in, and you have a procedural vote on whether you want to address that or not. And then I guess the only other thing that we retain in here is the 2.04.05 section that was added after the first reading to make it abundantly clear to everyone that prior to passage of any ordinance, the public shall be permitted to comment on an ordinance as part of an open public meeting. You're creating a requirement for yourselves that that has to occur. You can't close the public out. And just so that you're all aware, and so the public's aware, it's an open public meeting, it's not an open public forum. This council could say, thank you very much, citizens, we don't ever want to hear from you, you can be here, you can listen to us speak, you can observe our business, but you don't get to participate. So it'd be a lot like the state legislature. You could go sit in the audience, but you don't get to come down and speak. But come on, it's Deer Park, it's a small community, I represent, this is what I've done since 1985, is represent small jurisdictions, much like this. And I don't know any of them who take that part of the Open Public Meetings Act and say, no, it's an open public meeting, you don't get to speak. And so this affirmatively states, and you're going to have to hold yourself to it, well, if you fail though, because we of course have the, if you fail to follow your procedures, it doesn't invalidate what you did, because we don't want the procedures to take control and override the substance of the decisions that this, you know, highly skilled and well-paid members of the community, I'm joking, you know, basically, community volunteers are trying to make in the best interest of the community, and if you make a mistake on the procedure, frankly, who cares? It's the substance that matters. So if you followed the law, the state law that's required, then it's the law of the city. So this is what we've come up with. We did add a little more government, but I think we added a little bit more better government so that the citizens can feel comfortable that this council, while this is in place, is going to be here and listen, like you always have. I mean, Deer Park, you guys, I can't set up your, I think you handled everything quite well. So happy to answer any questions of what's before you.
Do you? Jason?
So just to be clear, what this now means, we scrapped the scrapping and the three reading?
Correct, the three reading will stay exactly like it is.
So that's the same?
Same.
Yeah, but it's the 9:30 a.m. Friday deadline that has changed. What about the 10-day procedure?
That's it. And that's very seldom going to apply if it's in section. It's in 204.02, the public hearing.
Right now, I missed that.
Right now, it says three days. I don't know any public hearing that you would try to give only three days notice on, and so I don't think you follow that. Most of the time when you have a public hearing, it's going to be like the one that you just set. There's very specific rules that are associated with how that hearing's held, budget hearing and those types of things. Debbie has to run through all these hoops to get these things down. And yes, every year, the ad hoc tax ordinance is going to be passed after waiving the three readings, that the very first meeting that gets entered. It's just going to happen. Not much we can do like that.
And I appreciate the adjustment, because I was going to mention tonight that I have absolutely heard no one who was in favor of going down with one, like nobody's in favor of that. And so I think there's a lot of skepticism towards government in general right now, and anything to speed things up makes people very nervous, whether or not they trust us individually or not. And so I, yeah, I think the three reading process is just fine. Like you said, if we need to accelerate that, waive that, we can do that. I think that's just.
Heather?
I appreciate this, I think this is a great compromise. Very happy to do this. One item I would like to take up separately at a different point would be coming back to the social media, email, text notification systems. But I think one of my additions to our amendments would have put that into this, that wasn't really the best place for that, I realize that. So I'm happy to come back to that, but I would like to, this is a great, yeah, this is good.
Ryan, any comments?
No, I think it's looking pretty good.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 10, considered agenda.
See, now if that ordinance were to come up right now, you'd have to ask the public to comment before you vote on it, just so you're aware. You don't get away with it on the third reading, you still, you want to make sure that the public's allowed, you know, to comment, so. Sorry to interrupt, but I think.
Well, clarification, it wouldn't be, it's not each, it's just at some point in the process.
Some point in the process.
Okay, that's right.
The public is going to be included.
Which is good.
And so I think we need to make very clear within the minutes now, when we have ordinances up, it's first reading, and if you're going to pass it on the second reading for public comment, you're going to say the public comment's going to occur at that reading, and make sure at the second meeting, if you waive the third reading, that you make sure that you document that the public comment is permitted to take part.
Chuck, is there a reason procedurally or timeline that we wouldn't allow public comment at every reading?
No, you can do it if you want, yeah. Unless your meetings are lasting four and a half hours, then, yeah. And if it's just repetitive, the same thing.
Thank you.
Good, Caleb?
Yes, sir.
Good. Okay, so back to item 10, considered agenda. Letter A, approval of voucher claim check numbers 39970 through 4008 in the amount of $253,661.90 for the open period December 2021. Item B, approval of voucher claim check numbers 4009 through 40036, including EFT dividends in the amount of $174,684.66 for the second half of January 2022. Next item C, approval of payroll checks number 1481 through 14512, including PF and NL, 941 taxes, and health benefits in the amount of $128,390.66 for the month of January 2022. Item D, Deer Park Airport Use Agreement, Storage Building, Spokane County. Item E, Deer Park Airport Use Agreement, Spokane County. And then item F, Deer Park Airport's Stevens County Sheriff's Office. You have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions for the council?
We need our public defender alive. Yeah. That was a rough one.
What was the last six months of 2021?
Oh, okay, that's helpful. Not as jarring. Thank you.
So we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, item 11, council questions, comments, or reports. We will start with D, and since we're running so long, I ask that you keep for about five minutes. D?
You can have that one there.
So I get 10?
Can't barter.
You know what happens when you tell a preacher he can talk, right?
Two minutes.
Okay. No, I just wanted to mention, in response to Councilman Stapp's comment about public thing, there are two things you guys will see with your water bill coming out, is a questionnaire about how you might like to be contacted by the city. This is an important thing for how does the city communicate with the public, how does the public communicate with the city? This last week, Tim and I had a Zoom meeting with a company called TextMyGov, which is about alberding the city, city residents of different events, that sort of thing, it's an opt-in kind of program. It seems fairly simple to use, I'm encouraged by it. Two concerns that I have is the expense, it's about $4,000 a year, which seems maybe a little bit high. The other concern is, what if we spend that $4,000 a year and 83 people sign on? Is it really worth that much money for that? And so we're considering, you know, we only have so much money, is there a benchmark? You know, would we try this for a year and see, you know, do we need to make a benchmark? Would it be worth it if 500 people signed on, 1,000 people signed on? Look, there's 1,000, that's probably more people than are reading the spokesman review, you know, to get our notices in the Tribune, so maybe it would be worth it. So all that to say, as a city government, we take seriously that our citizens want to hear from us, and we want to find the best route for that, so we're considering some different options. That's all.
Heather?
That's wonderful. Glad to hear that that survey's going out, so it's going out in the next water bill?
It's out today.
Oh, it's out today, great, good. Any other methods that, because I know that's been ineffective or reaching certain segments in the past, are there any other methods that we're going to use to invite the public? Could we do something on our website to?
We're working on that. The reason, Jason and I had a Zoom meeting with the stuff like, it's called, are we ready for it yet? It's a question. That's why I put the survey out. The survey will answer, and then we'll open net. What type of media do you use? Do you use print, do you use paper, do you use electronics? All these different questions. How many times are we going to use it? How many times do you use our website? So we want to get those out there first before we can move ahead with anything else.
I think my question is more, could we just put the same survey available on the website for people who don't get a water? So that if somebody says, oh, I didn't get more, I'm a ringer, whatever.
Yeah, you're right, you're right. We can do that on the website.
Okay, yeah, I would love to have that option available so that we're getting.
The only thing on the website, do you have the citizens, do you have the city? That's what we go through.
And that's a great question, and I think just adding that question, asking people to.
I think the way to handle that would be to let those come in, let the paper come back in, then come in on our website, see if we get a different type of response, or more response, lots of today, because there are quite a few people that do regret.
Right. Well, and people, I don't know how many, people just tend to throw stuff that they see every month that looks like, I don't know, I just think a lot of people.
That's ridiculous, tell us, yeah.
Oh, well, I mean, that helps, but I don't know, still my reading costs, so, no, that's good.
Good? I'm getting to it. Ryan, any comments or questions?
I think I have nothing for this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. All right, item 12, interested citizens, oral communications, requests, and comments of the audience on unrelated agenda items. Right here, joking, speaker, the mic.
Speaker, I thought you were pointing to somebody else.
I was pointing at Mike because it's harder to identify.
This is in the nature of kind of a suggestion, and it does not relate directly to the city. I just want to say I felt a lot for that survey and the water bill next, we don't need it.
Thank you.
So it's been two years, and Washington's had state emergencies for two years. Emergencies don't last that long, or they shouldn't. And I think I'm going to keep it sharp because, as you said, the line of home. Apparently, the way it's set up with the legislation, it's pretty difficult for them to get rid of the existing one, although they're trying to change some rules to make it easier in the future. And the answer does not seem to be in a hurry to get rid of it, it's starting to make some pressure. And my suggestion is that the City of Deer Park might consider a resolution, you can do that. Just to measure reasons why it's time for this to end, and suggesting that the governor is time for him to end. Obviously, he doesn't have the incentive to. He's getting it from different places, and if there's enough of it, it's going to have effect. So my suggestion here, and I actually wrote down some possible rare asks that one of the last, I don't need to dictate, because you want to do your own deal. But I think it would be a great idea for the council to do something like that, whether you want to give it to make number and have it read it to the legislature, or you just want to send it to the governor's office, or you want to put it on, because that's website. But just something to say that representing the people of Deer Park, that this emergency's over, and it's time for the governor to relinquish his power.
You disagree?
Well, you know, was that George Washington? You know, George Washington, at the end of the Revolutionary War, when King George III found out that Washington intended to go along to the spire rather than become emperor. He said, well, that is his great span of power, that, and so you don't have to worry about that. So that's my suggestion anyhow. And if anybody wants a copy of what I come up with, grab one of you guys in charge.
Thank you, Joe. Any other citizens? No. Next item is adjourned. Thank you.